Yeah. Yeah. We went up to Sprout Kids Parks with a dog and it was good. Okay, I see we are live and streaming. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the special council meeting. Committee the whole budget or special committee, the whole meeting for the budget held and get this. I'm going to reduce the numbers. Zero, two, 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 two thousand and twenty-two. The only day you're going to be able to get to say all those twos. Now you have to wait till zero, three, three, three. Wait, you'll never get there. So all those two is lining up today. We have a an agenda and reports on the budget. This is purposes of media to discuss the budget. But before we begin, we have another introduction to make today. I'm going to call Tracy. Tracy, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. I'll just take a quick moment here to introduce you all to our newest team member at the Town of Gibson's. I am pleased to introduce and announce that Glenda Seawards has accepted the position of administrative assistant one and will be providing administrative support on a casual basis starting today. Glenda brings with her extensive experience in customer service and administration, which she has gained from various administrative positions she has held throughout her career. Glenda joins us from the Gibson's Public Health Unit where she has been working as a program support clerk. There, Glenda was the first point of contact for community members accessing the health unit, both in person and by telephone. Glenda's warm, customer-centered approach is sure to be an asset to our organization, and we are thrilled to have her join our team. Please help me welcome Glenda to the Town of Gibson's, and we're sharing a screen here. So here's Glenda.
Glenda, welcome. Nice to see you and nice you're here. And you know, and you don't, we don't charge extra for those front row window seats you've got there. I know it's.
The view is awesome. The people are awesome. Thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to it.
Well, welcome. We look forward to working with you and very nice to see you.
Yeah.
And you, you may see us around town. That's why we like to do these introductions. You will know who we are. We may not know who you are. And so now we know. So thank you and welcome to the team.
Ah, thank you very much.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Have a great meeting.
Yeah, we will. Thank you. Okay, council, we'll ask firstly for approval of the agenda. Council Ladwick, Council Crow, all in favor? Thank you. And we only have one report, but I'll ask for receipt of the report on the preliminary general operating budget. Council Crow, Council Ladwick, all in favor? Thank you. And then we'll go directly to the Director of Finance for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose of this report is to provide the committee with the 2022 preliminary general operations budget for your, your review. We do have some departmental staff in the meeting as well to be on hand to answer any questions that you may have about operations as we go through the meeting. And so just I'll start with a high level overview of the revenue and expenses. So overall, for this budget is presenting is a revenue of all operate, all sources is budgeted to be just over seven point six million dollars. And this is an increase of about six percent as compared to the previous year. And when I am comparing in this, in this context, when I'm comparing to the previous year, when I'm comparing to is previous year's budget to this year's budget. And so expenditures, and this includes debt payments and transfers to reserves is just over seven point five million, and that's an increase of about six to six point two percent as compared to last year's budget. And this results in a budget surplus of just over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And this is based on a two percent tax increase for that's already embedded in this budget. And so this hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, this is what can be used to either finance a portion of the current year capital projects plan or additional transfers to reserves or any funding requests by external organizations or additional considerations that council may have this year as well. So, and again, this is based on a, I've embedded a two percent tax increase. And this is to cover operate operations contractual obligations as well as inflationary costs that we're seeing. And so one item also to note though is any COVID-related considerations that council may want to fund through this budget. This is fully funded through the COVID safe restart grant, so that won't affect the surplus that is being generated or any tax increase that might be required this year. Okay, so going over to page three of my report. General revenue is the biggest portion of our, of our revenue, and it's about sixty-five percent of revenue that we collect. And this year's budget is estimated or projected to be just over four point nine million dollars. And the biggest piece of that is the property taxes. And so this preliminary budget property tax revenue is just over three point seven million dollars. And what that includes is so embedded in that is every year we have a benefit of getting new assessments through new construction, which generates new taxation dollars. So last year, as a result of the new construction last year, the town is seeing an additional thirty, or sorry, seventy-four thousand dollars in a new taxation that was driven by that new construction. And so this is actually equivalent to about a two percent tax increase that we don't have to do because new construction is actually providing that automatically this year. This three point seven million dollars also includes the five percent funding allocation that council approved last year. And so this was the first allocation to RCMP funding that council has approved, and the, and the goal was to start bridging that gap between the, the costs that we're going to be incurring once the cap, once town exceeds the five thousand population. I think we're all pretty relieved that we didn't breach that barrier this year. It gives council another five years to fill that gap. That gap is estimated to be between about twenty-five to thirty percent of new taxation money. And so so far, council has approved five percent. So that's embedded in this year's budget already, so already included. So I'll speak to that a bit later, but in the expense side, but basically the five percent that was allocated last year is already included in this year's budget. And so then the third item of the property tax is that new two percent tax increase I referred to. So this budget reflects a two percent tax increase over last year. And this is to deal with any contractual obligations or inflationary increases. And our new one percent tax increase generates about thirty-seven thousand dollars this year. And I'm going to just stop there, just in case you don't have any questions about the taxes.
Yeah, Director, I just want to clarify for council, because I, you know, you and I had a conversation beforehand from my understanding. So what we are looking at right now, based upon these numbers and based upon the package you've given us, is an overall two percent budget increase for 2022. That includes the five percent that we've approved previously to the RCMP. And it includes a two percent inflationary factor, includes all the items of God. So right now, if we do nothing and add no additional projects or costs, that would increase beyond the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar surplus we've got, then we would be within a two percent budget for 2022 to the residents. And then, of course, in addition to that, there's the S C R D costs and other costs that will go on to our budget line. But, but right now we are looking at two percent. Is that my understanding?
That's correct. Yeah. And this is, of course, for general operations only and does, of course, reflect the water sewer increases that council approved. But yeah, this is specific to general ops, and it's really at this point in reflecting a new additional tax increases here of two percent over and above anything that was previously.
Thank you. Any questions, council? Any clarifications as we start this process of looking at this today? Okay, there are some things that I would like to see added to what's here and, and but they, my, my proposal will be that they would be within the one hundred and thirty-eight thousand and, and not that much of that, quite frankly. And, and just for example, Council Ladwick, I think we really have to move forward on the addition to the pool. And the cost of that, we need to just pay for engineering and planning and get on with it and some survey costs. You got a question? Yeah.
I'm on the same line of thinking as you, Mayor Bemish, but will we not be discussing that one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar surplus during the capital projects meeting on the fifteenth? Or are you wanting to discuss that today?
Well, it's available, but that way it's available. And yeah, I have, I have a second hit number hit this item, but that's, that's, that's one. Is setting money aside for that, setting money aside for the kind of the planning for the healing forest. And we need to look at that as well. And we also need to, I think we need to be much more serious look this year and do some planning around tennis and pickleball. I mean, I think that that is a, one of those pressures that people want us to look at. And I think that the only way we can do it is to start off, get a plan, look for a, look for a grant. So that's what we need to do. So my thoughts, and I'm sure you have other thoughts as well, but I got to speak first. Yeah. Council Ladwick?
That's your priority, Mayor. I just want to clarify process. Like, I'm happy to have that conversation today. I'm also happy to have that conversation on March fifteenth.
Yeah, yeah, just want to, we just don't want to lose the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else before we get started, council? Okay, back to you, Director of Finance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I did want to confirm for Council Ladwick that yes, March fifteenth, yeah, March fifteenth would be the meeting where the projects plans are going to be proposed to council. And so it is helpful to hear that feedback at this meeting, but we'll be going to that. They will be presenting Director of Infrastructure, presenting that on the fifteenth. Okay, so back to the operations budget. So I've already talked about the main piece of the general revenue. Another piece of general revenue I want just to bring your attention to, it's a bit of a change from previous years. I'm on now page four of my report, and this is the regional district fees for services. And you'll see this year it's budgeted to be just under nine thousand dollars. And this represents the fee that we collect from the RD to provide landscaping to the Gibson's Area Community Center as per the lease agreement that we have with them. And so this line used to, used to include the fee for service that we recouped for the operations of the Greenways facility. And so this line is seeing a reduction, but that's because the Greenway services for the Lower Sunshine Coast are now provided by the regional district directly. So there's no more impact on the town's budget from, from that perspective. All right, so moving to rental income, just briefly there, I want to touch on the RCMP, two lines there. So you can see the RCMP occupancy fees are just under a hundred and forty thousand, and then the operations and maintenance costs are just under fifty thousand. And so these two items relate to the building that we own and that the RCMP occupies and rents for us. And so this is showing the cost recovery revenue that we bring in for the corresponding costs on the expenditure side. And because we haven't reached that five thousand population, this arrangement stays as the way it has since the beginning of that building. So we're seeing a hundred percent cost recovery for those costs. And this is where they're showing up on the revenue side. Okay, so moving just on the bottom of page four, moving on to ICBC Driver Services. So this current year budget is reflecting revenue of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And you'll notice this is a reduction from previous years. And this reflects the reduced revenue we're now expecting to generate as a result of the insurance rates being reduced by ICBC last year. And then also the potential impact of their move to offering some of the services to be online. And so 2021, we saw that first reduction of the impact of the rate reductions. I don't know about you, but I got a few checks from ICBC in the mail for rate reductions. And so that's impacting our revenue here. Twenty twenty-two, we're gonna, is the online services that feature that they are offering is going to take an effect. I think it's May of this year. And so we might see an impact of that in our 2022 revenue budget or revenue actuals. We do have a communications plan to help draw people to our in-service, in-person service. And but if they do choose the online option, there is also understand a drop down or a tag that they tagged the Town of Gibson's, and that also provides us with some revenue. And the online option is for really simple insurance renewals and so and transactions only. So we're going to see some, I think, still quite a few in-person transactions coming to the counter because we, our, our team upstairs deals with a lot of complex insurance transactions as well. So we'll definitely see still some, a lot of in-person services. And I think by fall of this year, in discussion with the Director of Corporate Services, by this fall, we'll be in a better position to see just how big of an impact if any of that online services move for ICBC does impact the town. And then we'll adjust 2023 accordingly for that. Okay, any questions on that before I move on?
Council Ladwick?
Do we have a service agreement with the Huckleberry Daycare for, like, that looks like an affordable rental in, income? Do, is, is that to families for their childcare?
Yes, I'll speak to that, but I'll, the Director of Corporate Services is here to jump in as well. We do have a lease agreement that is in the process of being renewed. And previously on the history of that building is we have had previously higher rents, but councils over the time have wanted to support, you know, children's and families in the community and have led to a bit more subsidization for that rent. Yeah. And so Director of Corporate Officer, she's in the process of renewing that. So I'm not sure Rebecca, if you want to speak to that at all, but that has been the direction from council is to really make that space quite affordable, knowing that it's for daycares for, for families.
It's the lease was brought forward to council in camera, and it was sent back for some further information. Was so I've been working on gathering that information and bring it back to you. It came forward, I think, in October.
Maybe it was not that meeting. Okay, so it will come to us again, though?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Follow-up question, Corporate Officer. Do we own the building that the Jack and Jill preschools in?
Is that Harmony Lane?
Yes.
I'll double check. I believe so. We have a lease with them that was recently renewed as well.
Right, yeah, okay. And yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's a big thing because I know Sea Shell right now is struggling to. They are actually going to be developing a play school kindergarten facility in Sea Shell, where we actually provide that here through these two facilities that we, that we lease these out already. Council Lovely?
Yeah, I guess when I saw that announcement that people could renew their insurance or at least get their tags and a few other things over the phone, that I was going to ask you, but you are, you're going to take a look at that in October, I guess, and, and see what type of impact. Because I know it's, it's a pretty tight profit margin, the ICBC, right?
It is a pretty tight profit margin, and there's quite a list of things that cannot be renewed online. So what people are going to be able to renew online is, is fairly limited. For example, you cannot renew a lapsed or expired insurance policy. You cannot renew a fleet vehicle, a leased vehicle, a jointly owned vehicle. Those people still have to come in to renew. So we're thinking it may not be that much of an impact and that the real impact may still be through the enhanced care, the reduced rates that were introduced last year. And COVID's had somewhat of an impact on our ICBC because of the restrictions in how many people could come in, and that is lifted. So we're kind of waiting for the dust to settle a little to see how it's going to play out.
Thank you. Good, Director Finance, back to you.
Thank you very much. And so I'm on page five of my report now and moving on to revenue for protective services. And so the budget this year for that area is four hundred and four thousand dollars. Then two main items there are the business license revenue. And so projecting it to be a hundred and five thousand, which is a slight increase, but relatively stable. And then the building permit revenues is where there's more of an increase, and we're budgeting it to be about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And this is to reflect the significant increases that we've seen in the building area. It just doesn't seem to stop. So we are reflecting the higher revenue there. And the last little second, I guess, another big item, but I'm going to move direct down on page five to transfers from reserves. And so this is always a significant funding area that we have in the town. And so this year, the budget is three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-one. And so then one of the main items there is a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars use of the COVID funding safe restart grant. So when we received that in prior years, any unspent money went into a reserve for future spending, and so that's where that is now. So we're pulling back in. This budget is projected to pull back in at this point, just over a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. And this is to cover additional operating expenses that we expect to incur in 2022. And this comprised of it is a bit of a mixture, but some of it's going to fleet. So we have, you know, three duplicate vehicles right now to enable our, our teams to travel separately. There's cost relating to cleaning and office renovations. One of the big pieces is virtual meeting related expensive phones and software and IT equipment, so about sixty-two thousand dollars there. And then in this also, we have, of course, there's always cleaning and, and office PPE. But the one item that is council had already approved is nineteen thousand seven hundred dollars, and that's relating to the cost for the Gibson's Public Library. And so I've already included that in there, but as we get down to that line, I'll be looking for more direction from council as to what additional COVID support you may want to be providing, say, to that COVID community grant that was set up previously. And so also in this section is some transfers from reserves for election-related costs. A large transfer is funding that was carried over from previous years, and that relates to occupational health and safety initiatives, but more significantly for road and drainage repairs. And those were just issues that funding that was set aside available last year, but the, the work just couldn't get done. We had some capacity issues. So that's what that money is coming in for. And you'll also see just over twenty-nine thousand dollars from unused, previously unused Sea Cavalcade and Music in the Landing funding. We didn't need to pull that money in last year to cover costs. I'm, I'm pulling it in this year. And that is of a high level for the revenue. If there's any other revenue questions, this is a good time to ask them before I move on to expenditure side.
Just to clarify that the Sea Cavalcade, Music and Landing funding, the unused portion there, we are still budgeting for those services. That's just money that wasn't used previously.
That's right. Yeah, yeah. So there, the budgets are in there, the expenses in there. I just, I'm able to use previously set aside money to help with this year's budget. Okay, all right, so I'll move on.
Any questions, council? Not seeing none. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. So expenditure side, this is, there's a lot of items in here, so we'll start. So just to remind you, the total operating expenditures are budgeted to be just over seven point five million dollars. And this is an increase of about six point two percent as compared to last year's budget. The biggest portion of our expenditures is the general government expenditures at thirty-nine percent of all of that seven point five million. And so this year, that section is, is budgeted to be just over two point nine million dollars as compared to 2021. And this category is a big one. It includes costly into council, general government operations, the fees for services, grants to communities, operations and maintenance of our buildings, and as well as what we are touched on, the ICBC and driver services section. And so for the council section, estimated costs are just over two hundred and nine thousand dollars. This is an increase of about forty-two thousand over previous years. But you know, really, the bulk of this relates to the election that's coming this October. And so what we do is we set aside a certain amount of money every year to help fund this. It's kind of, you know, every four-year spike in cost. So that's why you're seeing this section come up quite, quite high this year. So one time it'll go back down again in 2023. So it's really just a timing thing for the election in the fall. So for the general government operations, this is again, the biggest part of the general government part, Cow Center. And this is just over two million dollars. And this again is a large category, which includes many of the general administration items. And so one item in here is staffing. And so our salaries this year have been reflected, are increased, reflect the new manager of a corporate and legislative services that council had previously approved. So there's a full years of, a full year of funding in there. Now, we're also seeing in here that is the budget for other professional services and fees. That's just over ninety-five thousand dollars. This includes the provision for services being offered by interim CEO as we transition back in that department as well as because again, we have a election this fall, we, we budget for a council orientation session, and that will be held in the fall after the election as well. So we want to make sure that we have funding available for that, to hold that in the fall. Moving over to page seven, this big section also includes IT-related costs. So this year, you're seeing the computer services budgets increased by about twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is additional IT support and software that we require as a town is growing. You know, our IT contract that we have is very good, but the bigger we get, the more that they have to support us. So we're seeing an expansion in that area. And we're also seeing an increase in computer equipment, and this is budgeted to increase by about thirty-two thousand this year. And this is for equipment to support a new staff, but also working remotely. The good news is that the majority of these funds is covered by the COVID restart grant because it does support working remotely. So that, 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 those costs are covered there. The next big section, oh, so I can see Council DeAndrea has a question.
Thank you. Just while we are talking about computer equipment. So the increase is twenty-five, but how, how much is the total service, the computer service?
Let me just get to that line. And so that
I thought so, over a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yes, yeah. So that line, so the total computer services, and this is a hundred and fifty-one thousand this budget this year. And that includes not just the support that we get from our IT contractor, which is Cloud Nine, but also includes all the software licensing that we use. So every kind of software we use, licensing goes through that. And so it's, it's a big, it's a big line. There's lots of, lots of items in there.
Okay, I think have the town, has the town considered like a part-time IT person? Would it be more affordable? Because I know sometimes servicing, having someone outside can increase. I have this experience in myself. I was just curious if the services, I know you mentioned software, but I'm just, I just wonder if this has been contemplated because it's just my personal experience. I'm used to have this resource outside, and then when we hire like a more ongoing, almost internal, I know it decreased, but I'm not sure the situation of the town, but just, just curiosity.
Yes, thank you. It's a good question. And previously, since I've been here, it's always been contracted. We have sometimes had a staff member who had a bit more IT experience would help with onsite, but predominantly it's been contracted out. And over the years, you know, as we grow, it's, I think, the question of whether we're able to bring that in-house is becoming more and more relevant. And so a lot of areas we're finding, you know, we're a small town, but we're going through some growing pains, and this is one of them. We get excellent support through Cloud Nine, but it's really expensive to have full-time IT support. So that would be an area, I think, I'm expecting that, you know, IT, the department admin who oversees IT might be looking at for future budgets. But at this point, we're, we're continuing with the Cloud Nine support that we get.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, carry on then.
Okay, thank you. So the next one is the grants, fees for service and donation flow-throughs. This is another, another large section. So the budget here is just under three hundred thousand dollars. And although it's a decrease, that decrease really is about flow-throughs and nothing really about in terms of service that we're providing to the community. And so this category, this includes the ongoing grants for areas that council has supported, like the Jazz Festival, the Coast Culture Alliance, the track, and then Sea Cavalcade. So a lot of, you know, community, community or events. This one, this year, I have included Sea Cavalcade, which is not expected to take place, but I did want to include the funds here in case council wanted to look at something else later in the year once the restrictions begin lifted. And so I just want to make sure you had some funding in case some other community festival could be organized or some sort of celebration. The Music in the Landing is in the park section of the budget, so I'll be talking about that later on in the report. So this section, but it is about the Sea Cavalcade funding, and as mentioned, it's in there under Sea Cavalcade, knowing that that won't take place, but that council might want some funding for something in its place later in the year. The, this section also includes ten thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for police victim services and restorative justice. And again, this was an area that potentially would have changed funding related wise if we had breached that five thousand population. And since we have not, this is, I've maintained it in as what was previously approved by council. This section also includes the general grants of assistant budget, and this is the program that has the two intakes, one in March and one in September, October. Yeah, September is a deadline. And so you'll see this year it's twenty thousand four hundred. So that now includes that annual two percent inflationary increase that council adopted to the most recent policy change. So that's good to see that one go up a little bit. This line, all this section also includes the COVID community grant line items for anything that council wishes to support. So as mentioned, what I've already embedded in here is the nineteen thousand seven hundred that council has approved of the Gibson's Public Library and is their support for vulnerable people in the community. And so previously, council, last year, you And so previously, council, last year, you authorized they develop the community covid community grant. It was twenty five thousand dollars total funding. I was wondering at this point if you want to provide direction, or at least some feedback on whether you want to include that again this year? Did you want the parameters to be the same? Last year it was maximum of one thousand dollars per organization. And again, the focus is organizations that support vulnerable people in the community to make sure that we meet the criteria of that grant.
Director, what's the, what was the balance carried forward? Was it carried forward the balance or just going to surplus?
Yeah, it's sort of a sub surplus item. I do keep, I do track it separately. And right now it's about nine hundred and, gosh, hang on, I had that number in my head a couple of days ago.
Nine thousand something.
Yeah, nine hundred, hang on a second. I'm adjusting for what we have included in the. So let's see, covid nine hundred and fifty six thousand, but then we have to reduce a hundred and fifty ish for this year. I think it was about two hundred over next year. There's still ample funds in there, frankly. Most of it is going to be ops, but some of it's going to be ops, but it also leaves room for some larger projects that we're going to be proposing. There's still ample room in there.
I I was more thinking of the of the twenty five thousand dollars we allocated last week.
Oh, yes.
What is the balance that was in there?
Oh, sorry, yeah, that was just under eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so if we were to, if we were to top that up again to twenty or twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, maybe twenty thousand dollars reflecting the actual usage of that funds. Would that be just adding to the balance?
Yes, yeah. So what I would do then is on that line, it shows nineteen thousand seven hundred. I would add twenty thousand to that line. And then we could promote that program again, if council wanted to keep the same parameters. And be like a twenty twenty two intake for that program, yeah.
Yeah. Covid hasn't gone away and it's still affecting many of the organizations we do business with. Counselor Ludwig?
Can you remind me what the parameters of that fund was? So it was a thousand, that was the max, was a thousand dollars. And it had to go towards organizations that help vulnerable people. And it had to be for covid.
Really cost.
Yeah, clearly the cost, yeah. And it's quite broad because a lot of in organizations, so, you know, a lot of organizations in the community do support vulnerable people. So, you know, that we don't, awards were given out to, you know, the. Food banks were one of them, the fire department, they had some equipment that was helping to when they were doing responding. Um, we had the seniors society, I believe, got some funding there from food related items. Um, yeah, it was a real variety. Yeah.
So can I just ask, was that us that put that parameter around? Because there is, yes, yeah, okay. Um, the only reason I'm asking is because I I have to admit, I've often felt like. Um, there was a number of organizations in the community that were really impacted by not being able to fundraise the way they normally do because of covid restrictions. And I don't, I feel like we didn't include that in this grant. And I know this is for the municipality, but I would like it if we could revisit that. Like, here's an example, the Sunshine Coast Affordable Housing Society normally does it, but I think they call it tap work soccer tournament. As as a fundraiser, which they couldn't do because of social gathering, et cetera, et cetera. And so their ability to fundraise was significantly reduced as a result of covid. And I feel like we haven't factored that into this grant. And I feel like we're sitting on this pot of money and there's all these organizations that could be actively maybe using it a bit more, so.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I can comment on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
So the reason it was restricted to the vulnerable persons is to try, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to. We spend the money in the spirit that it was in, that was intended by the ministry. And so initially, when the funds were provided to municipalities, it was to help us address. Uh, revenue shortfalls, uh, make sure that we can continue either reopening, which we didn't have any closures because we didn't operate any recreation facilities or airports. But I want to make sure that we could continue operating. So it was really town operating costs, emergency planning and response costs. So that's why the part of the extension to the uh, fire departments, bylaw enforcement area, again, fire protection and police. Computer I T is another criteria. And then the one that we're able to really extend out to the community is the services for vulnerable people. And so support for people living with either disabilities, mental illness or addictions, or other homelessness or other vulnerabilities. So that's really the criteria that I felt that sticking with the spirit of the grant, it's a grant's original intention, that we could pass some on to the general community.
But did the, do we know if the Affordable Houses Society applied for funds under that?
They did apply, but they applied for. Landscaping for one of their properties, which pretty doesn't meet that criteria.
Right, but they could apply under our other grant of assistance for that.
Uh, if they are doing, using the money to support vulnerable people in the community.
No, no, are there general grants of assistance?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, our general grants of assistance, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Ludwig, does that answer your question?
It it does. I find it a bit unfortunate that it's that restrictive because I still feel that these groups are still trying to help vulnerable people in our community. But it's it's their ability raises themselves, however. Anyway, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Lovely, then Counselor Crowe.
Yeah, I'm just, maybe, maybe it's follow up on Counselor Ludwig's point. Was it, what's in my mind is that if there's strict criteria bound, like, I I'm not quite sure why we keep carrying forward the budgeted amount for C Kavokade. If we can only assume it's not going to happen, why can't we use that, those funds for, for other purposes?
We can, and we can talk about that on that budget line, yeah.
Okay.
Definitely, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. Counselor Crowe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Beamish. Um, and just a clarification for people applying for the funding. It was my understanding that they had to be a registered charity, is that correct?
Or? No.
Okay. The the main criteria is that then is dealing with vulnerable people.
Yeah. Okay, we'll flag that question on C Kavokade when we come into the budget line. Counselor, do you interrupt?
Thank you. I just want to be like a little bit cautious with the the pot of money from covid. I I fully support like supporting the organizations that address vulnerable people. But we really don't know what's going to happen, right? That we could have another situation and we only learn this fall winter when the season change. And we don't know if the government's going to give us another boost. So even though we have the money, I I'd rather be a little bit cautious with.
Yeah.
Just trying to be because we we don't know, we simply don't know.
Yeah, and I guess this comes around the question, uh, does council want to reestablish that? That pot of money again this year to allow organizations to reto apply again this year? A lot of it comes down to the organizations having to deal with vulnerable people or deal with people are having to extra sanitize. Uh, have protective equipment and stuff like that. That was really what we were looking at to offset the cost of, and not for capital or anything else like that ideas. I would like to see us carry that on one more year because we are still in that covid and using the funds for what the purpose for which they were allocated to us. And I think we we found that way to do that for the library. And I think I'd do that also. Now, I would make it easier on you. I'd like to make a motion that we reestablish the the covid fund at twenty thousand dollars for community grants.
Awesome.
Yeah, okay. Discussion, Counselor Crowe?
Um, this would be a, and I'm trying to remember, I I know we were presented a copy of the application form for this funding. But are we question the people applying is, are they applying for similar funding from other organizations? And the reason I ask is, um, their search and rescue unit. Um, you know, I I spent probably about thirty five hundred dollars on various forms of P P E related to covid. Um, and we were able to recover a portion of that through our head office, through federal funding provided through D F O and Coast Guard. So I'm, do we have a criteria that this, that, that, do we ask people if they are seeking funding for the same thing from other sources?
Director Finance, I don't, this was a staff administered fund, but I don't recall we asked that question.
Yes, so this was, that's a really good point, Counselor Cole. And so this wasn't included, we don't ask specifically if they've been, if they're applying elsewhere. But what we do ask them is to recognize any reimbursement they they receive from any other level of government or granting organization. So what we do is we get them to describe, give us a list of their expenses, then less any reimbursement that they've received elsewhere. And then the total grant being requested, and that would be up to a maximum of a thousand dollars under the previous program.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. So have we voted then? Can we vote then on increasing it? Sorry, Corporate Officer?
Uh, yes, just a reminder that this is a special committee of the whole and not a special council meeting. So this would be a recommendation.
Recommendation to council, yes, thank you. Okay, so can I count all in favor? Thank you. And that's slightly below we had before, we had twenty five thousand before, but we have nine thousand left over. So that's why I say if we make it to twenty, and and if we, if if we need to go back to the well, just come back and ask again. So so that will be a change in the in the budget here, but for coming forward, uh, council. Okay, carry on, Director Finance.
Thank you, thank you, here. And what I'll do is, in anticipation that recommendation will be approved by council, I'll include that in my next budget update that I provide you. And that I believe comes on March the eighth, if we're on track, okay?
Thank you. Counselor Crowe?
Uh, just for clarification, so that recommendation is that we top up that budget out of the covid relief funding that we receive. So it's not, it's not, doesn't really in affect the tax in the percentage of tax increase.
No, that's correct, comes from the core, is topping up that 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 fund, yeah.
Yeah, but it's out of the covid.
That's correct, yeah.
Good, okay. And so we are in still in the, before I move on, there's two more items in this section. So one, Counselor Lovely was wanting to discuss the C Kavokade. So C Kavokade, the line is in this section of the budget. And right now, the amount that is listed is fifteen thousand dollars. And like I mentioned, as the mayor, I called it C Kavokade, knowing that it wouldn't take place this year, but wanted to make sure there was a line in there for council in case you wanted to redirect that some other way, either now or later. I just wanted to not move on here unless, until the group wants to maybe discuss that right now.
Yeah, it it may be that we just want to rename that as to community festivals or something. But personally, I'd like to see us leave some funds in the, in the, in the budget. We we are, we are continuing with Music in the Landing. But we had, I mean, the Lantern Festival that we had at one time was, I think, a good program. I think, I don't think we should overlook those opportunities. And I have always kind of had in my mind to have a, a thank goodness it's over type of thing. Celebrate with the, with the first responders and things of that nature and honor, honor the families of first responders. And it'd be nice to be able to have a budget to do that. And, uh, and so we could just rename it. But I'm I'm in favor myself of keeping some money in the budget for that. I saw hands up, Counselor D'Andrea, then Counselor Ludwig.
Yes, Mayor, I I fully support that because even if we may have, you know, a wave in winter, fall, winter, we might have a very good summer. And I think we can still celebrate. I think it is important. I like the idea of at least this year, uh, putting towards some community funding. And if everything goes well, we can have lots of party, even though.
Yeah.
May have to retreat later. Hopefully not.
Counselor Ludwig?
Do we, do we have a budget that's growing for C Kavokade? Is that?
We we had it up to twenty somewhat thousand, if I'm not mistaken, because we carried over two years, is that correct? Or no, we we, uh, we carried over into last year. And I think that was referred to earlier on.
Yes.
Help me out, Director Finance, yeah.
Yeah, the budget for C Kavokade line has always been fifteen thousand dollars. And traditionally, it's funded, the cost for the fireworks has been the town's contribution to that. And the funding that you see, you saw earlier, being carried forward, it was a combination of. C Kavokade and Music in the Landing unspent funds, but just one time money that we had transferred over during the year twenty twenty and then hadn't had to pull back. So just under thirty thousand dollars, it was a combination of those two festivals. But traditionally, C Kavokade line has always been fifteen thousand.
But right now, I'm just looking at the the spreadsheet, what is the budget, what what is, what do we have right now?
Fifteen thousand.
We already have, we have fifteen, and then so this would be a fifteen on top of that?
No.
No, uh, right now fifteen is in there and if council wants to change that amount, this is a good time to talk about that.
Just fifteen, okay. I I I to support, like, I get what Counselor Lovely saying. But I'd like to think, I think festivals in the summer are important, and I'd like to think that we're gonna, like, I I saw a line in it that we wouldn't. But I I don't feel that, I'd like to be more optimistic than that. So, and that and I also worry a little bit about. I do think a a summer festival is important for a community, and I get that we are contributions to the fireworks. But I also wonder, considering the state of that committee and and what's going on, the fatigue and the burnout. Whether more support just to help the community get off the ground again. Like, they were just starting to, right before covid happened, I went to a meeting about it. And so I, I don't know, I think a little bit of help just to get them off the ground might be a good idea.
Counselor D'Andrea?
I think if we are talking about C Kavokade, the issue, they need lots of planning in advance, it might be too late. That's the issue, but we can always ask them if they are maybe pre ready, but that's the issue. Yeah, right. Because they have to get licenses and it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of things that they have to get in advance.
Yeah, I think the Corporate Officer will have a perspective to report to us on that in the in the near future. And in terms of what is happening with the C Kavokade assets.
Counsel, sorry, Mayor Beamish, if I may.
Yes.
Um, I have met with Conchita, the mayor, and I also met with Conchita Harding. And there will be a letter coming to council in the near future.
I thought she was off of it.
Uh, Counselor Lovely?
Yeah, I think I've said this before, but I just, I mean, our community's changed and it's growing, and there's so many different facets. I think that C Kavokade is, is, you know, I don't know, I think it's time for like a fresh idea, that's all. And, you know, if these people are been put through the paces for years and they're they're burnt out, there's other people that want to do things. And, you know, it could be a festival, it could be two or three smaller festivals throughout the year.
Exactly, yeah.
So that would be my, that would be my suggestion. You can leave it on there, I'm just kind of going, okay, like, you know, might be time to move on from the bouncy castle, so.
Yeah. It it's possible we could retitle it and and give it just a, a festivals, just a festivals, and just call it that and have fifteen thousand allocated to festivals. And 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 see how that goes. Then, yeah, Counselor Crowe's got his hand up, he probably wants it all for the celebrate the present day. No.
There is a good segue there, Mayor Beamish. Um, this year is the fiftieth anniversary of of the the TV series, The Beachcomber's first airing. And, you know, like it or not, that little half hour show did have a huge impact on the community.
Yeah.
Which there'll be more to follow on that subject.
Yeah, so keeping the money there, but just changing the title line to festivals, uh, events, festivals and events or something like that, I think would be appropriate. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Does that work for you, Counselor, Director Finance?
Yes, sure, I will do that, I'll make a note, maybe community festivals, something like that, and that way, yeah, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the last item before we move off this, I just wanted to confirm with council that the school district forty six bursary, the line that's showing this year is showing fifteen hundred dollars. And that is, at this point, one thousand dollars for the Elephant Stone Secondary and five hundred dollars for the Gibson's Alternative School. And that just really reflects the different sizes of the two schools. And just wanted to confirm that council is comfortable with those numbers.
Uh, historically, we'd given, what, two fifty to the alternate school and a thousand to the high school?
Well, and and we there, we best, previously it was a thousand to Elephant Stone. And then last year, I believe, was the first year was to the alternative school. And I think it was two times two fifty, but I think it offered a higher amount, but they only end up awarding a lower amount. So it's basically the very beginning of the alternative school, you know, it's our second, second year to offer that. So I just wanted to confirm what number council would be comfortable with as a regular, assuming you want a regular bursary for that school as well.
Yeah. Counselor Ludwig? Council Ludwig.
So we're offering the graduates from the alternate program less than the ones from Alfie, is that right?
No, the Alfie was going to get a thousand dollars, the how they use the bursary, they could be four, two fifty, two hundred fifty dollar bursaries. They could be done that, that, how they use them. And then the the alternate school were offering five hundred dollars to, which it could be a a single bursary or two five hundred, two two hundred fifty dollar bursaries.
They also offer two fifty, I remember there was two, two fifty and I think one five hundred, but I think they got one thousand.
Yeah. What would you like to do for this year, and I think, well, whatever do this year, we should just continue in the future. Counselor Kroll.
Um, you know, when you look at the increasing cost of education, I'm almost thinking we should be looking at increasing these bursaries. Like, you know, these people are the future, if not this community, but they're the future of this country. And, you know, a thousand dollars towards education these days goes nowhere. So I think that's a budget line that we should really seriously have a a look at.
Yeah, sorry, you.
I said, I think the 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 scholarships and bursaries is a budget line that we should seriously review. Because the cost, the cost of education is not going down.
Yeah, now's the time to review it, do you want to propose an increase to it?
I, you know, with council's approval, I think we should, it's, you know, it's our futures, Council Lumley had something to say.
Council Lumley.
Yeah, I'm, I I guess the first question would be like, what are we, like, what's the purpose of us? Like, what are these funds like directed to the schools for? Like, I know schools get funded by people paying tax, but.
No, these are directed to the, to to be awarded to the students on graduation.
Award to the students on graduation.
That's correct.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, we don't specify in in our bursaries as to what programs or anything students have to go in. There are, there are many bursaries that can come from different areas, some for the arts, some for different aspects of education. We don't specify what aspect of education they would be going into. Council Ludwig.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Okay, I would say that to to date, to Council Quill's point. It's, I, it's funny, I would almost, it almost seems like the reverse funds would be more apropos. I mean, or if you're gonna, if you can increase it a bit, I'd agree with that. But I guess with the alternative school, like personally, it'd be nicer to give more people there, like have individual. You know, to recognize maybe more than just maybe one individual, only because I know that.
Yeah.
The state of that school and like how, you know, those kids, you know. Or obviously struggle more than somebody that's graduating with honors from a high school, right? I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's just my viewpoint.
Okay, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Dandrad, then Counselor Kroll.
As someone that graduated through an alternate program in like, I forget it was ninety five or something. I I got a thousand dollar bursary when I left and it, I remember it meant a lot to me. And I, I really support what Council Lumley just said there, if not more than at least, at least the same, like they have to be. And and I would recommend that, I don't know if we've done this, but we should maybe put some thought around the parameters of what. Of selecting a student for this, like someone that demonstrated great diplomacy in their, in their actions at school. Or like have some kind of characteristic or something that we, as, it's something that's kind of government, I mean, we are government, right? So like, why are we putting money towards these kids? So someone that demonstrated great leadership in in their pursuits or what have you, you know?
Hey, yeah, Council Dandrad.
Thank you, yeah, I was going to to speak on the lines that Council Ludwig said. I I see this bursary as also civic, you know, like how they, you know, their, their be, their duties. Towards the community, towards themselves, but ultimately, they are, like you said, leadership. And and I remember the, beca- because I think Elphinstone they give to top students. I I don't really know the criteria for Elphinstone, but for the alternative program was about that. They, I remain alliance about leadership and people who excel in not necessarily grades. But I think it's a good idea because I I think we are, we are supporting people to, to think in, in, in civic. Do it is right in their, their roles, their role in the community, I think, so I think it is a very good use of funds.
Counselor Kroll.
Thank you, um, you know, to Counselor Ludwig's comment, I think, you know, putting criteria against it, I think is not a bad idea. Like there's a Beachcombers scholarship that they don't give every year, but it's for students that are going into journalism. Or or the media, so it has a criteria, it doesn't mean it's the the student who got the highest grades in the school. And they're, they're getting rewarded. Um, I think it would actually be beneficial to put it to students who are pursuing careers in, let's say, the environment, marine biology. Things that directly impact on, on, you know, the the changing world we're living in between climate change. And global warming and different things like that. So, you know, it might not be the brightest student who receives a hundred thousand dollar scholarship, case in point, our student on council. But students who are pursuing careers in, on, you know, areas that are going to be for the benefit of humanity.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak in terms of being generalist on it, because one of the problems you have, you know, for example. I'm aware that the the foundation has a visual arts grant, an annual visual arts award of a thousand dollars. It doesn't get given out every year, because not every, not every class has people who are gonna go on Emily Carr or something else like that for that purpose. So, so it it doesn't give, give it out, so that means then that, in that case, that money goes back into the fund and continues to raise interest. What happens if the money from the town doesn't get given out? Does that mean that we don't give the next year or are we creating a fund to the school? So my, my, I know last year when we gave a thousand dollars to the, to the alternate school and to the high school. We recognized, we wanted to recognize students who persevered in the adversary of COVID. You know, it was, for some students, it was a challenge to continue to, to educate and get that school. Working mostly offline, online from home in a lot of cases. So it was, it was around perseverance, but I think we want to be careful about being too tight, because you may not have a student going into marine biology every year. And then say, okay, well, then then what do we do with that fund? Do we say, okay, well, we won't give you any money this year because you got money left over from last year? We don't want, I don't think we want to get into that administrative side, so it it could just be somebody who has demonstrated good. Good civics, civic behavior or something that, I think that on that, on that side of things. And 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 I think you're gonna find somebody every year for that, and I agree, it shouldn't be based on marks. It should be based upon, on other elements of performance. But we'll have to come up with that, we're gonna have to come up with that criteria among us. So then when we write the letter and give it the money to the school, we could say, here's a thousand dollars, our bursary is for this purpose. And right now, we, we haven't defined that, although I think the letter last year did say something around that. But are we saying, what are we saying right now, we want to give each school one thousand dollars? We agreed at that, council, council, you know, Council Lumley is saying more. And so that, so, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I actually hear voices, Council Dandrad.
Oh, we can, we can increase to fifteen hundred, but I, yeah, or, I don't, I don't know if I would. Make a difference between schools, really, I'm happy to increase for both schools. Because they all have needs, they all stood, that's right, in one way or another, but I'm happy to increase either fifty, five hundred for each one. Or a thousand.
Okay, Counselor Kroll.
Um, I was sort of thinking that we do it proportionately, but just double what we originally had is a thousand for the alternate school. And, you know, two thousand for Alfie based on the, just the increased numbers.
Council Ludwig.
Um, now something that we, you know, it's okay, I, it it's, it's the school. It's not the community that they're out of, so I'll just, won't go there.
Yeah, also Ludwig.
I support two thousand, one thousand for Alfie and one thousand for the alternate, and I think we should distinct, I think we should say that. It, that that's what it's for, just because it would be easy for it to kind of go, because there's so many things that Alfie, that it'd be easy for it to slide that way. So I think one thousand for each and, and unlike, said, when it comes time to handing this money over, we'll discuss the criteria at that time.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ludwig, seconded by Counselor Lumley, all in favor? That's recommended, council, one thousand dollars to each school and to carry that on. We won't have that debate next year unless it's to increase it, Counselor Dandrad.
Maybe it's just a clarification, we already give one thousand, we are talking about an increase of one thousand, so it would be two thousand for each school. Just to clarify, because we already give a thousand, right, we gave.
We gave extra last year to the alternate school because of COVID and 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 now, but but that was the one year. So now we're just kind of want to make that a permanent decision.
But we also give to Elphinstone.
Thousand dollars to Elphinstone, that's correct.
So what we're saying, we remain with a thousand to Elphinstone and give a thousand to.
To the alternate school.
Okay, so there's no increase with Elphinstone, it's just because on the point of Council Kroll, he was saying we should even increase the amount. I mean, in ninety five, a thousand dollars, oh my god, inflation, but yeah, it could be a conversation.
Yeah, Counselor Kroll.
No, I was, I sort of misinterpreted Counselor Ludwig, I thought she was going for the two and one. Two for.
The motion was one and one and at this point in time, and did we vote on it? Recommendation, council, okay, so corporate officer, did we vote?
I don't think so.
Okay. All, all in favor? Thank you, this will come back again next year, opposed?
Not really opposed, just, I I thought it should have been two and one.
Thank you, well, yeah. My recollection and is that Alfie gets somewhere close to a hundred thousand dollars a year at bursaries. For students, and so that, but the alternate school does not. And so I think that, I think what we're doing is upping our commitment to the alternate school right now.
Thank you for that background.
Yeah. Okay, carrying on, corporate officer, or Director Finance?
Oh, I just saw Council Lumley's hand go up.
Oh, Council Lumley.
I was gonna say, if Dave's got an extra, you know, thousand bucks kicking around, he could always drop it off at the high school.
Yeah. Well, yeah, great, or set up a, set up a bond with the community foundation, yeah. Yeah, okay, next, corporate officer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I'm gonna move to page eight of my report and go under Protective Services. And so here, we've got building inspection and bylaw.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Ludwig, go ahead.
Sorry.
Okay, so what report are we looking at, are we, because I've got the, the written one, are you looking at the spreadsheet?
I'm looking at the written one, I'm on page eight of fourteen, yeah, it's really my individual report as opposed to the overall agenda.
Okay, maybe I just felt like we're, maybe I missed something, I want to just quickly talk about the youth services worker that, that we get fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars.
Sure.
Go back and that's on page seven, yeah.
Yeah, no, I just very quickly, I just, I just want to say, and I think I've mentioned this before, i- if that's an individual, I just like to have them come and present to council. Because I, I don't know what that money is used for, I totally support youth. But everybody else here on this list has come to us in one way or another for us to kind of know how our money is being used and it would, they still would, whether to. So I just wanted.
Good idea, yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, they do come off into the S C R D present, so it'd be good to present, yeah, good. Okay, we could add that as a request, corporate officer, at some point in time.
Yes, I made a note of that, thank you.
Thank you, okay, sorry, Director Finance.
Oh, that's great, I'm just making note as well, I can follow up and just pull that agreement so we can make sure we're approaching the right organization. Okay, so page eight of my report. Protective Services, so the two areas I've here are building inspection and bylaw enforcement. And so for building inspection, you see an increase of about twenty one thousand dollars as compared to last year. And this relates to the additional resources required as we transition to having to, having a full-time level one and a full-time level three. Building inspection services on the, on site. And so recruitment for these positions is really quite challenging, but the recruitment's ongoing until we fill them. So, but the funding is there to have two, the two full-time positions for those associated services. And then the next year's budget will show the full year's impact of that. And so for bylaw enforcement, this budget's increasing by just over sixteen thousand dollars. And this reflects the additional resources required as we had proposed earlier to transition to having two bylaw officer positions. And so twenty twenty two shows just a phasing in of that, and then twenty twenty three shows the full costs. And so recruitment for this though would not start until council has approved to include these new positions in this new position in the budget. So, but it is being included as, was requested earlier this year. All right, so moving on to infrastructure services, and this is not, this is our second largest area of expenditures. In the operations budget, it comes in about twenty three percent of our total expenditures, of just over one point seven million dollars. There's increases and decreases between all the different areas, but overall, it's a minor increase of fifteen thousand dollars for this entire section. And so, let's see, I guess the two ones, I'll, you know, just keeping in mind the time, the two ones I'll, I'll bring to your attention are road maintenance and drainage. And so road maintenance, maintenance, this budget is stable, but what you'll notice is that the funding or, I guess, maybe you won't notice. But I'll bring to your attention as a funding for the crack setting and road patching, so that's being carried forward from twenty twenty one. And so the funding was incorporated into last year's budget, but we had some capacity challenges that prevented the majority of work being done. So although the line is high, we do have some funding that was carried over that could help support that work this year. And drainage is very similar, the budget this year for drainage is hundred and seventy four thousand. And this is an increase of about twenty two thousand from last year, and the same as road maintenance, the funds are being carried forward from twenty twenty one. Because we just couldn't get to that work last year, but we're hoping, planning on aiming at to get to it this year. The one section in the infrastructure services has gone down, this is a solid waste. And this budgeted to decrease by just over sixty five thousand dollars. And this really relates to the transition away from servicing green waste out of the town's operations and it's now being provided to the S C R D. So we saw the drop in recovery of the funds and this is the expenditure side, so we're seeing the drop in costs associated with delivering green waste processing. And what this does do though is it frees up the resources and enables town staffing and equipment. That was previously dedicated to the green waste provision to now be allocated elsewhere into our operations. And the solid waste section also includes garbage and organics and disposal services. And although they're budgeted to increase slightly, I'm not recommending a user fee increase at this time, we have a bit of room in there. So we're, I'm holding the fees as they are for this upcoming year as well. And as always, we have a communication line in the solid waste to make sure that we have funding for the, the app that we use for our garbage and organics collection. As well as any other advertising that our communications officer needs to do throughout, throughout the year. Make sure those services are communicated. All right, so moving over to parks and cultural services, I'm on page ten of my report now. So this area is budgeted in, oh, sorry, I can see a hand up from Counselor DiAndrade.
Counselor Dandrad, go ahead.
Thank you, is this a quick question, Henry Road Workshop?
Yes.
Is it on Henry Road?
That's where our public works yard is.
Okay, so maybe, okay. Okay, it's beyond, it's above Reed, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, I thought there was another, okay, clarify, thank you.
Yeah, that's located just above the green waste processing.
Somehow I thought there was another one that wasn't, okay, thanks, yeah.
All right, and so parks and cultural services, and so this area is budgeted to increase by just over forty nine thousand dollars this year. And so this is where the. And so this is where, um, the Arts and Culture Line, this is reflects where the Music and the Landing Program is, um, is shown. And I've got it budgeted back up at nineteen thousand dollars, and this brings it back up to its pre-COVID levels, we had dropped down for COVID to adjust there, and now I'm bringing it back up. And this funding part of it is being funded that we had saved from, we hadn't used in previous years. Uh, this area also has increases being allocated to repairs and maintenance at various parks, as well as some additional funding for tree maintenance. Now, the budget also includes additional resourcing required as we propose to transition to having a full-time manager of parks and green space. And so twenty twenty-two shows the transition into having that position, twenty twenty-three will show the full year. And so previously, this responsibility had been included under the maintenance, manager of maintenance operations, uh, job duties, which. It really showed that dedicated resourcing is required in order to manage the parks and green spaces appropriately. And so for this one, like the bylaw, recruitment will only take place once council approves the inclusion of this new position into the budget. But I am including it, reflecting in the budget as requested, so you can see the implication of that one. Any questions on Parks and Cultural Services before I sort of move on and wrap up with fiscal?
This is where, I guess, I guess it's in the capital side that we'll talk about the development of, as I say, the design for the. The building next to the pool, the dog-off-leash area, the healing forest and tennis and pickleball courts.
That's right, yeah, yes, that, um, I mean, council could, you know, give some, or provide some guidance, information, so what you want to see in the. March fifteenth meeting, if you wanted to have that at this meeting, I'm pretty close to finishing up operations, so. If you wanted to hold, either hold that thought or have that conversation right now, that's okay, okay?
We'll come back to it, yeah, thanks.
Right, so fiscal services, so this is where, um, another big section, and this includes all of our. Debt servicing and transfers to reserves, and so in here, we're seeing a overall budget of just over one point one million dollars. It includes, includes an increase to the transfer to reserve, and I'm able to do that using COVID funding because we are duplicating some. Uh, fleet, uh, items right now, so I'm able to put some funding into reserve, which will help, help fund that. This section also includes, uh, that, uh, years ago, council had put in a one percent. One percent of taxes to be allocated to future asset replacement for the general fund. We have that, as you know, for water and sewer, it's getting, you know, set up quite nicely. In general, we have a ways to go to get that one, but right now we have a one percent every year going into a reserve. And so that's about thirty-seven thousand dollars, and that is for things like buildings and roads in the general fund. This also includes, um, the five thousand dollars, that's that new annual allocation that council put in place last year to go towards supporting. Uh, infrastructure related for children. And this is also where the, um, five percent for RCMP funding is going across to that build at reserve, so. Last year, council approved five percent to, uh, start building a reserve for future policing funding. Uh, that five percent now is embedded in the tax rate, so every year. A hundred, and I think it's now, it's gonna be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it's gonna be going across into sort of building that reserve to, uh, bridge that gap for when we do breach that. Five thousand dollar population, and I'll be bringing a report to the March eighth meeting that specifically talks about the policing and. So where we're at now, and maybe some options for council to consider if you want to do some more additional increases. Um, sort of a plan between now and the next five years, and that would be again for March eighth meeting. And here also, there's a, you know, but it changes, there's some debt servicing as well, um, but overall, it's. Uh, one point one million dollars for the fiscal services section, and so again, overall, this budget includes a base. Recommendation of five percent, and that really is to keep things, you know, held for. Contractual obligations and long-term inflationary costs, and that generates a surplus of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, it's a little lower now that we've made. Couple changes, one, well, just one change for the bursary effects, that the other one doesn't, because COVID funded, so. Just over a hundred, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars available, and that would be for additional. Projects or initiatives that council wants to, um, approve between now and 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 we, when you adopt the budget. As well as it also helps fund, um, provide some taxation funding for projects. All right, so I did include on pages fourteen and fifteen, no, no, sorry, eleven and twelve. Some preliminary twenty twenty-one year-end numbers, just so you can have some context there, we are still working on twenty twenty-one year-end. And I'm planning to bring, if all goes well, fingers crossed, uh, financial statements to council on April the. April the fifth meeting, I think, that might be a bit ambitious, but, um, and I will also have a year-end report at that time. And so for this, at this point, the preliminary budget will be rolled into the finalized five-year financial plan. Any, so this is the preliminary stages, any additions that council makes between in the next couple of meetings. I'll incorporate into the long-term financial plan, which is brought back in bylaw form to council. Uh, from a communications point of view, Elizabeth has done a wonderful job to outline the communications plan that she has for the budgets, not just general, but water and. Sanitary as well, um. On the last page of my report, I sort of gave you a list of next steps and next meetings, and so at this point, the next meeting is scheduled for May eighth. And that's a special committee of the whole, as mentioned in there, I will bring a report for RCMP. Uh, funding to give you some options of over the next, you know, five years for that, and. Also bring a report for about the tax burden, that's a conversation that council has every year in, in, uh, advances setting the tax rates. And then March fifteenth is the first, I'll bring an update of this operations budget, and then we'll, uh, Director of Infrastructure will bring the five-year. Capital and Projects Plan, and that's where additional initiatives that council wants to see could be added at your, um, direction. And then also just a heads up, we also included, uh, we did last year, that was, uh, council's, um, request to have a budget dialogue. And so we've included that again this year because it was so well-attended, way better than our ever, our in-person, um. Meetings that we've had, so we're looking at that for March twenty-second in the evening, and again, those dates are. Subject to change, but that gives you a sense of how the next, um, month or so is gonna roll out, so. That's it for my report, and if you, uh, want to have any questions or other additional comments, there's a bunch of staff members here who can answer some questions.
Thank you, I do see questions, so go to Counselor Deandrade and Counselor Ludwig.
Thank you, in regards to D C C, the budget recovered from D C C's goes to. How, does, does it go to the general, goes specific to where it's recorded, if it's D C C, water goes to water maintenance, or water?
That's right, so development cost charges are, are, they can, they're able to fund specific projects and development-related, and their roads, D C Cs. Goes specifically to roads projects, drainage, specifically drainage, water to water and sewer to sewer, so they're, they're quite directed to those funds.
Just a clarification, please, it's to the, to expenses that probably have already occurred, and this is just, uh. Recovering the funds, am I correct?
It's expenses that, expenditures that are, uh, listed in the development cost charges by law, so there's a list of projects that are applicable. That can be, the D C C funds can be spent on, that's already a predetermined, uh, list. And sometimes it's, you know, the town has to spend the funds ahead of time because it's.
Yeah.
Over development-driven, but ideally, they line up with when we actually have to make that change, and then we have the D C C cost to fund it at that time.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Ludwig?
Another question is to comment, I just wanted to thank the Director of Finance for this thorough report, it was really good, it was so nice to see the thorough. Section on communication and on next steps, it was really well laid out, so thank you very much for all your effort on it, I know it was a big.
Thank you, I appreciate the feedback, yeah, thank you.
Um, I have. Two questions, I have a question and a comment, the question is that, uh, go, going back to D C Cs. Uh, D C C Roads Gospel Rock, is there, are there, it's, that's a blank number, is there, is there a number coming for that? Or is there, what is that being expended?
Then there is gonna be a number coming, and I'm gonna defer the Director of Infrastructure Services for that. Hopefully Dave is near his mic.
Dave, did you hear that question?
This one is development-driven, so the timing, the. Will be, um, the time of when we get.
I could find my, uh, unmute, my, my unmute button, sorry. So the, the Gospel Rock, uh, Road D C C is only charged to the. Properties within the, uh, Gospel Rock neighborhood area.
Okay.
Uh, and so the D C Cs are, um, a hundred percent. Like, as a, they, they only benefit development, they don't benefit the, uh, existing town, so once that road is built. Uh, it will be, will have been fully funded by development cost charges.
And that's the road, uh, the connector road, is it?
Yeah, that goes from, uh, the end of Ingalls Road right now, uh, down to, well, the, basically the block seven site.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so, so that, uh. Yeah, so we don't have a figure, a cost figure for that yet?
Um, hang on, I'm just gonna, uh. Uh, have a look at my. Sheets, no, I don't have it in front of me, we do, it is in the, um, D C C, uh, background or report. Um, I can't recall how much it is, but, uh, but yes, as I say, the, the costs will be recovered from developers.
Thank you. So the other question I have is a comment, it's on the table on page fourteen of fourteen, and that is the, um. The Budget Consultation Dialogue, uh, section. I wonder if we could consider adding an afternoon section as well to that, because sometimes evening sections are not developed, I'd like to make sure that. All sectors of community have an equal opportunity, so people who may not be available to make an evening session might be available to make an afternoon session. And, uh, so that if we had two sessions that day based on the same thing, we, we, we might, uh, yes, there'll be some repetition. But there might be some more learning as well. How does everybody feel about that? Yeah, okay, so, if, uh, we could look at adding that, uh, director, uh, add a, add a session from. Three to five, and then we'll come back and do it all over, over game from seven to nine, or seven, eight, whatever it takes.
Yeah, so just, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so looking at the calendar, on the twenty-second, there you'll see the line above, we've got a three o'clock, while the timing isn't there, but that. March twenty-second, Special Committee of the Whole, that's from three to five, and that is. Basically, the bulk of it will be, well, you'll see there, update number two, tax rate decision and the project update, so ideally, the. Session happens after that, so it really only gives us, I mean, we could do maybe the next day. Because right now, we're basically three to five is Community of the Whole, and then seven is the evening budget dialogue consultation. So maybe the next, the Wednesday.
Yeah, I, I would like to see if we can't get another, another session in there, so take a look at the calendar and see what works.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna go back, Counselor Ludwig, go ahead.
Uh, just in light of people's schedules, could we not just add a section to our March twenty-second? Special Cow Meeting that says, Community Opportunity for Input, or like, I mean, we're, we're meeting every week, like, can't we just? Just an opposite, let's leave it at that, that would be my preference.
Counselor Lumley?
Yeah, a couple of things, the policing, uh, I'm, I'm quite fine with what is being put aside, I don't, I'm, I'm. I, I was not shocked that we didn't hit the five thousand. And quite frankly, I don't think we'll hit it in the next census either. Based on our, our growth was like, you know, three times what the growth of the province was, and we still didn't hit it. So if you, if you, even if you did another, uh, three point three percent growth on top of that, we're still under it. But it also draws me to the point that during your, uh, during your, uh, our conversation. Uh, you said there was two hundred empty homes, or two hundred homes.
That's according to the census, yeah.
Okay, so back to, I know I've mentioned this before, I know, uh, Counselor Lag would, uh, Ludwig has mentioned this before. Maybe we should look at like a vacancy tax, like a home vacancy, because if, even if you said, so two hundred homes, like even at one percent. Which is, and, and I just, I just quickly did it, one percent average home cost here, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sure. Times two hundred, that's one point five million dollars. That would, even if we went over the five thousand, that would pay for our policing costs. So if there's people just land speculating or home speculating over here, I mean, maybe they should pay for it, I mean, it's. It's happening in other communities, why wouldn't it happen in ours, where people probably are really looking at the fact that. It's easy to land speculate here. Just because it's such a desirable place to live, we're on the water, we're forty-minute ferry ride, I mean, it could only get worse, I don't know. Anyway, we, maybe we should revisit that, I think that'd be a good idea.
Counselor Ludwig?
I'm so glad Counselor Lumley just brought that up, because I will be looking for that in our, um, affordable housing strategy when that comes back to council again, because I've mentioned it a few times. I think we need to have a statement in our affordable housing strategy that says that we'll advocate for that, or that we, we should be at, at least be exploring and advocating for it. Um, I have, if you go to any real estate advertisement in downtown Vancouver and you see real estate listings for the Sunshine Coast. It will say, no, no vacancy tax, like that's how our property advertised here, and I really think that we as a local government should be. Having conversations about that, so I'm glad you got that.
Well, what we should probably do first is let's investigate what is required to do that, because I'm not sure we are covered by that legislation that allows us to do that, so.
We're not advocating for it.
That's right, yeah, yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
Like, we're just outside of the catchment area.
Yeah, we, we can't just arbitrarily implement it, we have to, we have to go to province, authority, yeah. Counselor Lumley?
But, I, if we have to advocate, yeah, we should get on that, I mean, again, I know I mentioned this before, but. There's only, there's a handful of rentals in this town right now, like maybe two or three, and they're so overpriced, it's not even funny, so. Uh, we, we have to do something.
I think the cautionary statement is the, 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 the two hundred, if you, if you look at the, um. The, the statement that was in the, the census, it was two hundred vacant homes. Uh, on April eleventh, when the census, which was Census Day. Now, they don't say why they were vacant, whether there are people on holidays, or what, people away for the day, there were just two thousand, two hundred vacant homes. On April eleventh, and that's consistent, I mean, I think in the, in the area, including the Greater Cashmere area for, for. For our area, it was, um, it was over four hundred vacant homes. They just, they, they just don't say why, and they don't know why they were vacant, just said on that date. I'm just looking to see if I had a copy of the census document in front of me, on that date, May the eleventh, there was two hundred, or, it was May or March. There was two hundred vacant homes, so, so we, we have to investigate that, then get the authority, but yeah, no, I, I don't disagree. Yeah, so, so that's something we can, uh, task staff to do, the C I O can take a look at that and see what the, um. The challenges are around that, what the authorities are. And then, uh, coming back, as I say, and, and, and I'd like to talk about, uh. How we ensure that we have some funding in the budget to investigate the, the, uh. We need to get into some detail on what the healing force is gonna cost us, what the building beside the pool is gonna cost us. Uh, with the dog-off-leash area, we had in there last year. Um, and then, uh, looking at tennis court, pickleball courts, and how that's all gonna play out, we need to, we need to be. Serious and move forward with that with some commitment of budget, uh, on that, so, Counselor Crowe, I saw your hand, and Counselor Ludwig?
Thank you, Mayor Bemish, do we need a, uh, a, a recommendation to go to council to, um. Get some feedback on the, on the vacancy tax? Or is just what we've discussed here sufficient to, um, make it happen?
C I O, are you, do you need a recommendation to, to start, uh, for you, between yourself and the Director of Finance to, to look at what is entailed in that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, it won't be necessary, I think, uh, just to get, I got some information, and we'll come back. To council, and then if you need something more specific at that time, then we could consider, uh, a resolution for the next steps. It's okay with you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, let's not lose track of it, that's all, yeah. Counselor Ludwig?
So is this now when we're moving into capital projects?
I think it'd be, really, we're not gonna do it in capital projects, I just want, my sense is, these are some things I'll be looking for in capital projects. And we do have that hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in surplus, that if we're just right now doing some engineering costs and stuff like that, that's where that could go to, yeah.
Okay, so the two projects that I'll be looking for, for the capital projects is absolutely the building. Okay, so the two projects that I'll be looking for, for the capital projects is absolutely the building by the pool. And then making sure that we have that stormwater outflow study in the budget, whether that comes up, I don't know where it comes out of, but as long as it's in the books, then those are the two that I'm looking.
Yeah. And Council Dindra?
Thank you. Um, first a clarification with the twenty five thousand dollars that was, uh, directed to DPA two. I, I didn't see anything mentioned, but I'm sure the Director of Finance knows. I know it was going to be uh, returned to, I don't remember exactly what was the resolution, but this is one. Uh, but I also suspect that we, we might have to spend a little bit of more money. Not double necessarily, but perhaps a little bit more. And I also would like to understand what's the state of our urban forest? Because I know the CIO had on the five years planning. So maybe he can, I, I don't know if there's any money allocated to that and if there's any plan to start on twenty twenty two.
Um. Who wants to, uh, CIO?
Maybe as a start, I, that would, those types of works, uh, that information on the DPs and and have any other work the council wants to do is in the follow-up discussion, that would be in the five-year capital coming up. Because it depends on this decision today for what's available. And then from there, we, we, we come back with some proposals for council. I believe that's the process we've, we've used before.
Okay.
I think we did have money budgeted and committed to the, uh, uh, DPA updates, uh, fund. So it's already committed money, so. And carry it forward.
But do we have anything, the urban forest, it was like any money allocated? Did you, did, did you get anything through grants? Or I know for the sea to source, there was grant money, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Director of Infra-, sorry. Yeah, David, if you wanna just give us an update there, please, thank you.
Yeah, there's, um, uh, there's several different projects, uh, that uh, will be in the five-year plan and, and actually was in the twenty twenty one five-year plan as well, uh, that will feed into the urban forest.
Okay.
Yeah. Council Ludwig.
Just while we're on it. Um, I, I think we're getting to a point now where we should start thinking about a map or something that shows where the trees are going to be planted that we're getting, um, funds for from tree cutting permits. And I think it would be wise of us to have, to, to develop some kind of a map that says, here's the, you know, the streets where we plan to plan, here's the areas where, you know, because I, I think it's getting to that point now. Enough trees are coming down that people might want to say, what, where is that actually? Now that I think about it in our budget, do we have a tree reserve? Any, anyway, I think about that.
Director of Infrastructure?
Or Director Finance, like, I mean, we should be.
How are we tracking our trees?
I can, uh, take that, Mr. Mayor. So partly it is when we do get a fine for a tree removal, that goes into a fund for uh, replacing, uh, putting replacement trees in. So there is a separate fund. It's not huge at the moment. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but the fund, as far as I understand, the fine revenue is what is building the tree for tree replacement.
Okay, but every time someone cuts a tree down, it's supposed to, depending on the dimension, if we're still going by a tree by law, it's supposed to be like a five hundred dollar or something. Uh, Director of Infrastructure, can I correct me?
It's not, not all trees, uh, fall under the requirement for replacement. Um, but, uh, tho- those are being tracked and set aside or identified. Yeah. And, um, yeah, I, I think it's probably worthwhile, uh, doing what you suggest, the, uh, the mapping. Um, I think it'll be, you know, just a good, uh, good promo or a good, uh, yeah.
If you look, for example, with the number of trees that the school district is proposing to provide us with, that's a very large number of trees. Do we have a plan as to where those are going to go?
Exactly.
Yeah, we've got several places identified.
Okay, and that's what, that's what Council Ludwig's looking for, for that, that map showing where, where we are going to be planting our new forests. Yeah. Yeah, Council Dindra?
Thank you. And that's the reason why an urban plan is so important, right? Because we really need to, to have a plan looking forward, uh, where we, we're gonna dedicate it, you know, perhaps certain types of trees in certain areas or the areas there are priority for replanting, given the landscape or given whatever, uh, development that's going on in the area, which also is somehow could be, it, it is tied up to the DPA. That's why it's so important to do in the sequence, right? We have a tree by law, a tree by law is just one too, but it's, it's a management tool would be really urban forest and not every place, uh, would be, uh, for, for example, in, in a park is hundred percent, you wanna maintain the coverage, but in other areas maybe just tidier. So I think this is important for also for the public to understand.
Uh, Council Ludwig.
Sorry, just while we're on trees, the more I think about this, the more I think we should develop a, a reserve for trees where we just, where we, cause right now, if I understand what Director of Infrastructure just said, it sounds like, um, it's just going into fines, like a more general pot. And maybe we should very specifically pull that out as a tree replacement reserve fund, just to make sure that that's what the funds are being used for, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, sorry, just, just to be clear, I, I didn't mean to indicate where the funds were going or how they were being recorded. That's, uh, the Director of Finance would.
Right, okay.
Be the person that would, yeah, no, no, I, it's okay.
Um, so anyways, I just, I'm making that suggestion. I think we should have a tree reserve line or what you have it.
Director of Finance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So all I'll do is I will dig a bit and just because that's relatively new, uh, it's not top of my head, but I'll, uh, do a bit of digging, see how much we have set aside so far. And it is dedicated, even though it is collected, um, to find some of the money it is dedicated, so it's not going to, you know, to a big melting pot, but I'll bring that information back potentially at the next meeting. I do have a comment to make that's not too related, but relates to the hundred and thirty eight thousand, whenever you're ready to go back to that topic. I don't want to.
Okay, no, no, I, I do also recognize that some of the people who have been, uh, who paid into the tree fund, so to speak, as a result of fines, also would like to know where the trees go. Uh, so I think that's important as well that we, uh, that we are, uh, have that consistency that, uh, yes, you, you cut down your trees, we charged you and this is, we have this fund now, or we have planted your sixteen trees over here. Yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, so nothing further on that, uh, Director of Finance, go, Council Crowe.
Um, just while we're on trees, the, um, and I realize it's sort of new, but the fines and the, the, the fee for replacement trees all goes into one fund at the moment, is that correct?
Director of Finance?
Yes, that's the information I'll be bringing back to you. It is, like I said, because it's so new. I know we are recording them separately. I just off the top of my head, I can't remember where that's landing, but it is being, it is being tracked separately.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Hey, Director Finance, back to the one thirty eight thousand?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what I should clear, what I should clarify with that is that is taxation funding that can go towards capital projects. However, on that capital projects list that uh, will be brought to council, some of the items are already committed and one that brings to mind that uses taxation funding, which I have to make a note to bring this up at this point every year, is the commitment that we have with the Healthy Harbors Project. And that's an annual expenditure of twenty five thousand dollars. So that is already coming, going to be coming out of that one thirty eight. Um, is it, it uses taxation funding to fund that, but it is a project, which is why it's over in the project section. The other, um, item that, that brought to mind was the, earlier in the year, you council had a presentation from a group which used to be called the How Sound Tides Canada Project and now it's called Make Way. And they were requesting twelve hundred dollars per year for five years. And this was phase two of the How Sound Tides Project. And at that point, council had, uh, deferred position, decision until the budget, um, consultation and sorry, my apologies, I should have included that in the grant section of my report, but I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. Uh, we, I can bring this back at the March eighth meeting, if you like, just to refresh your memories of what that request was for consideration then, if you like.
Okay.
Yeah, Council Dindra?
It's for the Marine Reference Guide. It's specific, right? There's not so much, it's, it's just around twelve hundred dollars, like she said. I think it's five thousand dollars for five years, right? Well, well, around this, this, yeah. So do, do we, do we take this from grants or do we take this from?
This would be, sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, this would be in the grants section, but it's funded from taxation funding. So if council wants to support that initiative, then I would include that as a grant being provided to that organization at twelve hundred dollars per year and would be a commitment for, uh, five years if council chose to do that. So it would reduce that one thirty eight as well. Um,
Yeah.
I just need you to do that.
Councilor Dindra, remove that, yeah. Yeah, seconded by Council Crowe. I think we know what that one's about, you know, it's a very valuable, uh, resource to us. I think we do, personally, I'd like to support it. I'll call a question on the paper. Thank you. So, okay, recommendation to council that we support that at the twelve, at the level of twelve hundred dollars per year. Going forward, yeah. Council Crowe?
Thank you, Mayor Bemish. Um, and I don't know if this is the appropriate place to bring this up. Um, you know, we provide funding, you know, in our budget line to the senior society. We've included funding for, you know, um, infrastructure for, you know, parks with, with, with respect to, um, you know, replacing, um, play equipment and things like that. Um, we had a presentation to council earlier this year with respect to hospice. And, um, the hospice society and COVID's really brought the issue home between COVID and the opioid crisis. Um, hospice have really been stretched with the service they provide to the community. So, you know, I would like to see it as a budget line sort of based on population and, you know, assuming, you know, up, you know, unlike Counselor Lumley, the feeling we weren't going to hit the five thousand, I thought we'd probably hit the five thousand. Um, but I, you know, I was sort of thinking something like a dollar per person. That became an annual, um, budget line to go towards hospice with the, um, proviso that we sent, um, what we're doing and recommending to the District of Seashell and the Regional District that, you know, death knows no boundaries and dealing with it, um, you know, i- is a huge issue. So, you know, I was thinking if it was based on population at a dollar per person, that for us would work out at like a five thousand dollar a year. Budget line to go towards hospice because, you know, currently they're having to rely on grants and donations, which fluctuates with the state of, um, you know, the economy, what's happening, one thing and another. So they, they don't always have assured financing and I think they need to operate with that security. So I would, um, you know, ask that we consider this funding.
Council Dindra?
I, I was just curious with the, the way Council Crowe put that, um, it makes sense, one person. So we will add to the taxation one dollar every year. And it fluctuates or is that the way? But do we actually act? So whatever calculated at the end, we, we actually, uh, add the one dollar?
I think we would have to base it on, on, I would want to base it on a fixed census number. So increase in every five years so that we know what the actual number is, because the provincial estimates always lead ahead, ahead of the census, so.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, drove a secondary for Council, uh, Crowe's motion, uh, this time.
Oh, so.
Council Dindra, the motion to be clear is that, uh, that the Town of Gibsons commit, uh, one dollar per person based upon the, uh, the, the five-year census numbers, uh, to hospice and the Hospice Society in the Sunshine Coast. Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I guess I'm not in favor of the broader issue of limited, of saying subject to it being, being supported by the other communities. I don't know what they already give.
It wasn't subject to, it was just that we say we're doing this and, um, seek their support in following suit.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and that, Council, uh, Ludwig, Council Lumley?
I mean, obviously I support this in principle, but I start to worry that we're just, we're getting too many line items that like every, I, every issue just has its own line item and I.
Yeah.
And I, I'm just wondering if there's another way to go about this. I'm not saying I don't support it, but do you know what I mean? Like, um, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't want to speak on that.
Yeah. Council Lumley?
And I know part of our, uh, I, I completely support it, but I know part of our, 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 uh, uh, strategic goals is advocacy. And when those people came and, and presented to council and they get zero funding from the province.
Yeah.
You know, on top of that, whereas Ontario hospice is completely funded by the province. Uh, we should be advocating that, um, these healthcare taxes that businesses pay and people pay should, some of what should come out of there is support for the hospice. So I mean, that should be part of supporting them ourselves and we should be advocating to get some funding from the province for them at the same time.
Agree, I, I've made that point with the province, um, recently to two ministers. One is that based of that, that we are being asked to do a lot of non-traditional things with a very traditional organization. We're organized along the traditional lines of finance and engineering and parks and recreation and public administration. We don't have a social services function. Uh, and we're not taxing for it, but we're being asked to do more and more of that based upon grants, which are not core funding. They are based upon, uh, funds that, uh, the community becomes to rely on, uh, like, um, homelessness and shelters. Uh, but, uh, and when they are, when they are cut out, the community turns to us and said, why are you reducing money for, for shelters? And we say, well, you know, that's, it's a grant we get from the province. And, uh, so it, it, it is one of those things, we're becoming more and more walking into that direction and, and, and setting that up. But I, I, to me, uh, supporting the hospice for fifty, eight hundred dollars a year, whatever we are, fifty, six hundred dollars a year, forty-six, is a lot better than buying fireworks. So, so I think that I, I strongly support that. Council Ludwig?
Just to keep it, um, front and center, uh, to keep, uh, Council Lumley's comment front and center, I would like it if we're going to do this, that we sort of make it conditional that every year that is given, that the ID in collaboration with us, we are writing letters to the province about this. Or just somehow keep the advocacy at the forefront of, of what's going on here and recognize that this we, this shouldn't be falling on our shoulders. Cause I don't know how to, how to do that in our, in our, um, communication with them or in the line item, but just to really focus on that, because I think Council Lumley is right. This should not, this, this. I accept it, but yeah.
Yeah. Council Crowe and Council Dindra?
Um, sort of to both Counselor Lumley and Counselor Ludwig's comment, um, I, you know, I think we, you know, if we agree that we're going to support hospice in, um, our communications to the district and the regional district, that we ask them to support us in the advocacy of proper ministry funding to the service. And, um, you know, and that, you know, we would, you know, sort of agree to support the service until such time as the ministry. Well, maybe we shouldn't say that. Till such time as the ministry, um, you know, bites the bullet and does what they should be doing. You know, how, it, it's just another example of federal and provincial services that trickle down to the municipality. We, we're faced with a problem, um, you know, and ultimately it's, it's costing us money to deal with it. So I think, you know, I fully agree, there needs to be a, a, a bit of pushback to the people that should be paying.
I'm gonna go to Council Dindra then Council Lumley.
So Mayor, do we have to wait for UBCM to, to start the process? Cause I, I know a lot of the things we do during UBCM, right? We write, uh, uh, suggestions and other people's support, or do you do you think, uh, we could do, like, start? I know we started with the, the watershed protection. So, so how, how do you feel about it? Because I agree, I agree, even, even housing. You know, as much as I support housing, I feel like it's being downloaded to us, right? And imagine this. And imagine this money, if we could do something for our community that is not housing, right? There's five hundred thousand dollars sitting there. So I fully agree that we should dedicate a part of our, uh, time to advocate, right? Or a little bit of municipal staff time to, to help advocate. We might get, uh, a little further. Yeah.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of inconsistencies out there. Counselor Lumley?
Yeah, I would suggest, uh, I wouldn't wait for UBCM. I would suggest that our council write a letter, obviously to Nicholas Simons. Um, uh, and then we get letters all the time from other municipalities that want us to support something that they're advocating. So I would suggest writing a, a letter, obviously not the same letter, but a letter for those municipalities that contact their uh, provincial, uh, counterparts and, and say the same thing is that this, this is getting no funding, not just underfunded. It's zero funding. And now we've, we've made a shift from, from taxing, you know, middle class for their healthcare. Now we've got these corporations that are making, you know, uh, hundreds of millions and billions of dollars. I mean, come on, it's, it only makes sense that, uh, uh, you know, what was one percent? What another one percent would be a drop in the bucket for them, but it might fund the whole program. So that'd be my suggestion. Nicholas Simons and then write every municipality and say, hey, we should all be pushing for this right now.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the floor, uh, to, uh, that we, that we add, um, hospice society as a budget line at the rate of the, uh, one dollar per member of our community based upon the uh, census, the, the Canada census. Uh, and, uh, we want to add to that and further that they, a council right to advocate to the province. Um, that, uh, the province provide funding, uh, fund hospice. Um, uh, and however we word that, but yeah. Is that, um, I can agree to add that to motion, uh, Counselor Crowell? Okay.
The Director of Finance had her hand up for quite a while.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Yeah.
I just wondered if she wants to say anything before we vote.
Thank you very, uh, thank you very much. I know the clarity was provided in the motion. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that it was a new line item. And that it was referencing the federal versus provincial census. So thank you.
Federal census, that's right. Yeah. Oh, and that's a recommendation to council. So, um, any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And the letter that we send advocated to the province, we will copy to our other, other municipalities. Yeah.
And it's all, like, we get those letters sometimes from.
We do, we do. Yeah. And ask them to support it. Yeah. Yeah. And, uh, yeah.
And, and Mayor, if, uh, Counselor Lumley gave an example on Terry, it would be nice to know if other, other provinces as well.
Hospice Society may know that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, follow up with them. So in terms of researching that letter. Yeah. Um, okay.
And even comparison, sometimes, uh, it helps with first world nations, right? I mean, I'm sure Denmark and other like this, the Nordic countries, they have way more support than Canada, right? And here, but it's not supporting that. So I think there's a comparative analysis is positive.
I think unless we're going to get a resolution to continue after five o'clock, I think we better think about winding this up. Uh, there was no, I think was, we made a couple of resolutions. We have received a report. Uh, and, uh, I appreciate again, Director of Finance, uh, the detail in the report and the, the readability of the report. It was very helpful and we will see more. And, uh, we're not finished with this. This is not approving the budget at this point in time. This is just kind of adding to the, the process. So, um, um, I guess, does Counselor have anything further they want to discuss before we go into inquiries? Seeing none, let's go to inquiries so that, uh, and we have five minutes for inquiries.
If anyone has a question, please raise your hand. I see no hands raised, Mayor Bemish.
Thank you. Okay. Then, uh, I want to thank everybody for being here. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Now, thank you, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Crowell, all in favor? Thank you. And thank everybody to, for attending staff and members of the council and game. Welcome, Glenda. Uh, we'll look forward to seeing more of you. And as counselors come into the office, uh, come on down and make sure, sure you introduce yourself and, uh, and, and look around. Things have changed down here. Things are not where they used to be. Okay. So you're going to find yourself walking into people's offices now looking for your mail.